Yeah.
... United States of America, considered Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Yep.
Disclosure of actual potential conflict measures? You gonna have anything on the agenda that'll hold there? Uh, communication for the public?
You have one?
Okay, I've got a one communication from Tim on cell service to the Warrior Center and Dan.
Going to other facilities, a lot of these things to be self-service, ours has pretty much zero. How do we should be there texting and all that stuff? Anyway, put some kind of grammar and all that stuff. I just said, maybe you can just add a address or maybe you open wifi that's where we, you know, I'm refreshing, look into that. Second thing is band, whoever went, you guys. Volleyball, Philip Band was. We went to SDSU girls' game, yeah. Small school. I love what we do, people ask me why the, you know, people, it's just not doing. Then I went to Philip Band, so I don't know what they're doing, but we can call them and see how they're doing. Maybe it's what they work. But yeah, I swear more kids than that down in schools, they're recruiting somehow. We can look at that. It's a, just fits things as a pet. You guys are the ones who want a great, they have a pet band. But I mean, if you could look into that, I don't know. I was pretty impressed with the Philly and I think. Probably not just the teacher, but part of, you gotta start around everything that's program. Just gonna, that's, look into that somehow. I think Jones, uh, Wyman, they're small, kind of, they're band, they're small schools, more than us. Looking at it, appreciate it.
Is your one?
Yeah.
Okay, uh. One deletion. Item number seventy-three points. Motion to approve the following volunteers. We'll delete that from the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion, yeah, this is your second, second I have here. Board discussion. Hearing that, all their motions, if I was saying aye, aye, both things tonight, motion carried. Item number sixty-six point zero, I get a motion to approve the consent agenda. My Kayla, that was second. Second I have. Uh, board discussion. At the, building anything out of that? Any other discussion? Hearing that, all their motions, if I was saying aye, aye, both things tonight, motion carried. Okay, before we go to the board reports, we have a student presentation.
Side for that can do a machine and like magic, where it's on, after the machine is done, let it cool down to cook. When given time, you're responsible for supporting the cooking.
Oh, um, do they do the traditional host, host's job instead of doing any of the tickets? The other tickets, you have to like, put away in place just to give you the order ticket. We write down the prices of the items on the ticket, then we add them all together, then we look ready to roll at the bottom of the ticket. And wait for the customer to come pay.
Taking dressing, as a busser, our job was to take their dishes after customers would then eat. We would also wipe and wipe the table down and prepare for the next customer, who also holds the awareness nature of the course respect. And whatever path you receive.
To qualify for a position of waiter or waitress at Martin Life's Cafe, you need to have strong customer service, communication, and multitasking skills. The role was shared among everyone in the class, but two people working at a time. When, hopefully, this role, you were responsible for staying at the front, taking orders, and handing out foods once it was ready. Desserts were made into the cellar barn, hoping well enough for Chris. We prepared these desserts a week before we went to the cellar barn, then that Monday, we would bake them till they are fresh. We took them with us to the cellar barn and prepared them for customers. We liked being able to do this, so they didn't have to during busy days.
In conclusion, after spending the five Mondays, we spent in our experience, I always read that is a very good learning experience and also time spent well. As we rotated through the five stations, each of us learned some important life skills, like time management and communication skills. We believed that what we did also gave us a look at the different aspects of a culinary career and helped us decide if we would want to take any of these jobs to a future career. Overall, it was a great learning experience for us to be able to go out and see, and see what it like.
We thank you students for coming, it was a great presentation, and I'm sure you enjoyed what you were doing those Mondays. Thank you. Okay, administrative committee reports. I attended Veterans Day program last week and want to give a loud shout out. Thanks to the high school government class for putting together a wonderful salute to our veterans. It was an awesome program. Also, kudos to the elementary students for their fine singing. I just had a smile at their enthusiasm. Uh, just an FYI, and this is put aboard, just something to think about. I know we don't want to change things in the middle of the school year, which, uh. Sometimes, uh, we have a tendency to do, but, but we'd like to keep it and even keel throughout the entire year. I don't want the board to start thinking about volunteer coaches. Maybe we as a board should start thinking about not approving volunteer coaches until after knowing how many students we have that are out, instead of the other way around. That, it's just something to think about for, for, uh, future discussion, I just want the board to, to think about it. No action or anything, just, just some thoughts about it. Uh, finally, I'd like to congratulate the volleyball players and coaches for their fantastic season and qualifying for the state tournament. I wish them all the best on their quest for bringing home the state championship trophy. Any questions? Okay, Carol.
Good evening. Just so everybody remembers, it's American Education Week. I put something on the website under my column and sent something out to staff today. And American Education Week is a chance to appreciate everyone that is involved in education, not just the certified staff, but all support staff, our secretaries, our bus drivers, or just anybody you can think of. It takes all, all of the staff to make the school run well, and, um, they're greatly appreciated, so. They probably don't hear that enough, so. Abby and I attended the AS, BSD, Executive Directors, Keith Larson's presentation on October twenty-second. And I, Abby, did you want to add anything to that?
I know, it's just a good learning experience.
I also noted that the government class did a great job on the Veterans Day program and the culinary class tonight, they just, you, you know why we're here, because they make you smile, those funness. And I got, I got to go out there a couple of times and observe them out there, oh my gosh, just fun, just, I'm sure the cellar barn misses them. Um, also congratulations on the state volleyball, um, trip for the girls, and that'll be, will be exciting here at the end of the week. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with Dana and Craig from, um, Tribal Ed again, so following up on the previous meeting that we've had. Staff development, uh, current enrollment were still about the same, elementary two oh five, middle school ninety-two, high school one thirty-two. Um, October seventeenth, we had Gary Brooks, it was very well received, um, insight from, um, Julie, did some surveys afterward, but. Some of the comments, there were, he was very energetic, humorous, heartfelt approach to educational leadership and positive school culture. That was a ninety-five, or ninety-eight percent positive rating, which doesn't happen very often, so obviously it was very good. Um, insight, the keynote speaker, and opportunities for collegial interaction were strongest, takeaways reinforcing the value of inspiration and connection to professional learning days. So, um, a lot of us, small schools, we don't have a lot of first grade, second grade teachers, high school, so it's really nice to be able to collaborate with other schools who have those same positions. It's something that, you know, just doesn't, doesn't happen a lot. Family chats, we hosted family chats, feedback from families continues to spread valuable insight. I would encourage more and more people to get involved with that. It's an interesting adventure, I think, from our side, and that we're used to giving instruction and leading, and that's an opportunity for us to sit and listen. Sometimes that's hard not to want to interject, um, and so I think it's really good for, if we can get more people to help us understand their perception or their views on, on what we're doing well and what we need to improve on. The first half of the bonus checks were given out last Friday after end service on November seventh, so that should have made everybody smile and enjoy the weekend. For curriculum, uh, we're working on that literacy grant, we should be getting very close, Amy and I went to, um, kickoff for it on October twenty-ninth. I was really excited about it because I think it will strengthen our instruction, um, help us look at emphasizing our literacy with phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And then assessing those as well, so we know where the students are, where we need to go with them with instruction. We have continued to work on that curriculum support plan, and we're going to focus on math for this, this year, and then hopefully it'll be a structure for us to work through all curriculums that way. Facility grounds update, the east side of the Commons entrance con, concrete is completed, if you seen that, it looks so nice, I really didn't think we'd get it done this fall, so kudos to, uh, the staff working on that. Roofing, we, we have some, a few little issues that we're working on, Aaron told me today that someone's coming back to look at this roof where they're connected, there were some issues, I didn't leave until they sent him a picture. The number one diesel tank is finished, it's not in its permanent location until we end up completing the new busbar, and then it may find a new location. So, um, we've gotten a few bit, or a few interests in the design build, I think someone's coming to look at the site later this week. Um, so that's exciting, because originally we didn't have anybody at the last meeting, so, and it closes December first. Uh, the blowers are running in the Warrior Center and, um, doing a pretty good job for the situation we're in. Ken reported this morning that when he pulled the volleyball standards out, you could, he could feel the airflow there, so we are getting nice airflow under the gym floor, and we'll have to continue to monitor and make decisions as we go down the road. The new thirty-five passenger activity bus is in, it went to the football playoffs, I believe it'll be going to the volleyball state. The difference in that bus is that it has seat belts, and we are required by law to use them at their, the vehicle, so that's going to be a little different, because kids are used to getting up, moving around in the bus, and that doesn't work very well when you're wearing a seatbelt, so. Um, the new handicap accessible bus should be here any day, we're just not sure when it's paid for, and we're just waiting for delivery. I told you last time, we were doing the water quality testing for lead, trying to get that date completed, again, we're not concerned about that, but it will become a requirement in twenty-seventh, so. Some of the benefits of that is we get free consultant support, um, communication materials, water testing, and they would help replace some of the fixtures if we need to, and there's, um, up to fifty thousand dollars for that, so if we would have any water classes or, you know, anything like that that need replaced, it would help with that. And then with, um, negotiations, I reached out to BCA on October thirteenth and November fourth, um, requesting to start those conversations about the language we were talking about, and then, uh, what suggestions they have for the twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is weird to say, but calendar, so. We'll continue to make it with them and see where we go with that. Any questions? Yeah, there's really maybe two areas of concern, and then Ken has a plan for that, and we might have to, we've been thinking maybe there's an extra ceiling in there, so trying to work to maybe remove that. Other than that, the board does look so much better, so. Other than that, the board does look so much better, so.
Any further questions? Thank you, Carol. Carrie.
At the high school, we're sitting at 98.48% for our attendance right now, which is holding on pretty strong. We were a little bit less than that last year. I didn't put the percentage down, but I know we were lower than that at this point last year. I think the flu bug hit us pretty hard that time. Our student happenings, the culinary class presented their information, and I just want to recognize that the students in that class, all, I believe, are SERVSAE certified, not all of them yet, so they're in process of finishing their SERVSAE. So, that was a really nice opportunity for them to see the validity of that certification. Our students organized Halloween carnival with a wide variety of activities for people of all ages, and that seemed to be quite the success. We had three students who went to Scrubs Camp and got the opportunity to check out Western Dakota Tech and see what it had to offer for them, and do some hands-on learning, get a feel for that campus. Senior government class, I reiterate also, it's already been submitted, did a great job organizing and hosting the community program for Veterans Day. It was nice to have speeches from three Bennett County alumni who served for our country along with the patriotic music from across the district, so it was really nicely done. We had a red ribbon week assembly, an OST safety presentation, which provided information in the mornings on illegal substances. Our district and service staff was treated to the first round of ice cream. We tested that out. We're still learning the process and getting through the bugs, but it's kind of interesting and an exciting thing. We had a lot of positive comments about the ice cream. And then last week, we held a gratitude night for the high school students and their families as part of our family engagement activities, and it was a really, a really nice, positive night. It was very well-attended. I want to also add that we have a pep rally tomorrow afternoon at 3:30 at the Warrior Center, and a send-off for the girls for state at 7:00 a.m. on Wednesday, which is high school party. Looking forward to a lot of these events.
Thank you, Carrie. Michaela.
I also inserted my attendance in there, we're about 91%. We look at our regularly chronic absent, and that, we have about 26% of our students, and that means that they've missed a certain percentage. Once you've missed about, in the year, eight days or more, then you're chronically absent, and that does get counted against students. So, trying to figure out how can we get students to not be chronically absent is just, it's always dependent on what the situation is. It's situational for everything, so just looking at those different numbers. But we had 16 out of our 89 students that have missed zero days, which is nice, or, you know, looking at, they may have gone to school activity or something like that, but that doesn't count against them, so that's pretty exciting too, to look at the positive side of it. In my report, I included a little bit more information for you about our accelerated reader percentages, they go up a little bit more, and looking at how do we get the students to actually take the test, take the AR test is something we're also working on. We also have a program that we call, it's called Freckle Math and Freckle ELA, and those are programs that run through the Renaissance Program. So, after they take their, when we do like our beginning of the year, middle year, end year testing, it goes into, the Freckle Program takes that information and gives them the ability to work on what they're missing. So, let's say that their test comes back that they are missing some fifth grade standards as a sixth grader, it gives them those skills to work on. And then it also, teachers can then also assign what they're working on now, also through Freckle, to be able to work on that. We use that for both math and ELA, so that they can improve. So, it gives some percentages there. With our student happenings, we have our barista night happening tonight at 6:30. A lot of the essays that the students have worked on have been posted. We have posters from our STEM and science, math things. The focus tonight is literacy, so there's going to be some different activities for literacy. Students are super excited to actually be barista. They came up with a logo and a name and are ready to serve different dreams to people that come. Last week, I attended the PBIS coaches training with a couple others. We listened to Holly Strand, she presented on a lot of the issues with technology and social media, and it was really good information. Felt a little bit of preaching to the choir as educators, we, some of those things, know it's trying to figure out now, how can we present that to our families, so that they understand the dangers that are through social media and cell phones and all of those different things. So, she gave us some ideas to talk about and look at. The afternoon was a little bit exciting, because Rapid City lost power, so we didn't get to really complete what was on the agenda, so the remainder of the day for PBIS, because it was a little chaotic without having power and the sirens, and, you know, wondering what's going to happen next. So, that was kind of exciting. The thing, we were able to eat lunch, because the power went off as we were having lunch. The middle school staff were doing a book study this fall, and it's related to part of our comprehensive needs assessment plan that we have to do for our school improvement. We've also tied it in with the PBIS that we are also doing, so we wanted to make something that worked with all the areas that we're trying to work on. So, the book that we are almost finished with is called Better Than Character Sticks, and it's just talking more about the restorative practices that you can do for having positive classroom management, instead of always just having, you know, here's something that happened, here's a consequence. What is it that we can do beforehand, and instead of just immediately going to a suspension or detention or a harsh punishment, what is it that they could do to restore whatever it is that they did? And it's also situational as well, but that's just the book that we are working on, and it's very easy read, and we're having really good discussions about this. So, if you're interested in wanting to know what we're talking about, I can get you the information. And that is all we have.
Any questions? Thank you, Michaela. Melissa.
I also attended the Spain training that Michaela did, and with no internet, it was really hard to follow through on some of the stuff, but we had good conversations with other people from Rapid City and several other schools. Yeah, so we had some good conversations. Other positive things that we're doing at our school, we're going to still continue with Warrior of the Week. A staff member just chooses and recognizes a student that's demonstrating good core values. We're going to do weekly attendance incentives. Basically, that's any class that's over 94%. They just get their class in a bucket, we draw it out, do something fun, maybe a pumpkin party or go down to the park or something. We're going to do quarterly attendance awards as well. At the semester, we'll look at perfect attendance. We're going to continue our prize box store, which is probably our most popular thing at the elementary. The kids earn their prize bucks for positive behaviors, academics, good citizenship, and then they take those bucks and spend them at the store. We're running out of things for kids to buy, so now we have to be creative, like the PE teacher, they have to pay 30 bucks to go shoot baskets with the PE teacher. So, that's becoming very popular with the kids as well. We were doing the morning recess, and as soon as kids ate their breakfast, they could go outside and do the morning recess, and that really helped with our attendance, because kids wanted to come to school. But now that it's cold in the mornings, not everybody has coats and hats and gloves, and not a lot of staff to monitor that out there, so we had to stop our morning recess, but I think in the springtime, when the weather gets better, we'll continue that. And I've heard a lot of good comments about it, so just get those kids out active after they eat breakfast. Maybe we'll be a little creative and see how we can do something with the cold weather. Our attendance, we are at, I believe, 94.6% across the grade levels at the elementary, but kindergarten's at 93, so they're right close to that 94%. First grade has 96, second grade is 93, third grade is 93, fourth grade is 94, and fifth grade is 94. So, we're hovering right around that 94%, like Michaela talked about, the chronic absentees. 94% seems to be the cutoff after those eight days, so we're trying really hard to stick around that 94%. December 8th, we'll start our benchmark testing for reading and math, so maybe by that board meeting, I'll have more data for you guys. The Veterans Day program on Tuesday, my favorite part was when they asked the senior class, or senior, the government class to stand up and give them a round of applause. We had kindergartners and first graders standing up, so they thought the crowd was cheering for them, so it was really sweet, really cute. Little Warrior volleyball was done, and now we're starting with Little Warrior Girls Basketball, and I believe we have about 30 participants in that. We're doing a food drive, and I really wanted the kids to have the, my kids helping kids, and we're getting some donations from the community, but I want kids to pack up the food donations and pass it out, and kind of learn a value of helping others during the time of need. It really affects some kids down there, you know, with the SNAP benefits being on hold, and we do see it, and so this is our way of kids giving back, you know, helping other kids in the community. So, if people want to donate some food to the elementary, just bring it down, put it in the little gym, I've got a church group that's going to come in and help us stack it up, and then I want some kids to give it out, so. Staff professional development, we did some family engagement stuff on Friday. I was really pleased with the staff that did come and their participation in those discussions. We got a lot of ideas on how to incorporate our families. The Jerry Brooks in Codoka was well-attended. I did not go, but my staff is talking about it with the positive school culture. We had red ribbon week, high school students came down and presented lessons on being drug-free. The three weeks in December, we're going to decorate our hallways like we used to, of course not during reading and math or instruction time, but I think it really just kind of lightens the spirit and the Christmas cheer at the elementary. Our Christmas concert is December 9th. We're going to start with pre-K through second at 5:30, third through fifth will be at 6:30. We had OST fire prevention assembly on Thursday. There was fire trucks and some different things presented. And last but not least, children's, the Missoula Children's Theater will be here April 27th through May 1st. We're going to work on two performances, and they are doing Sleeping Beauty, so I just got the application in the mail. So, next board report, I'll put in who helped fund that. It was a state and a local organization that helped fund that money. So, there will probably be other things that we can help with, like maybe some meals for kids, so they can do their rehearsals, so. That should be it.
Thank you, Melissa. Amy.
I attended the practice as one of the required ones of tribal coordinators. They had a lot of ideas on different activities for family engagement, which I thought is always good, a lot of new stuff. A lot of talk about building that family partnerships, which goes along with all the school improvement that our staff is working on, and the engagement state coming in, and really having meaningful two-way communication. One of the things that really hammering this part is it's not just us giving information the two ways, it's so important. Family chats go into that, and so do bedrooms. So, we're hopefully doing what we can to meet those needs. Everything else you can see, but I do want to do a shout-out to the high school government class and explain how that came about. So, they have, one of their state standards is to do a civics project, and they did it one first quarter, which was, you know, carry the Constitution Day. And so, second quarter, they wanted to do help with the Veterans Program. And so, Mandy asked me to come down, I went and presented, talked about what they needed. They have my folder of stuff, and they literally, they made contacts, they came up with the program. There was a little bit about conversations about songs and choices that they wanted, and we talked about how important it was to keep it not only traditional for our community, but also respectful. So, it was a little bit, but they were all really good. And on the day of, they got released and came down to help set up, and I was, I'll be honest, I was extremely nervous, because you have an hour between lunch and the program. I had decorations to hang and chairs to set up and floors to clean, and it was done in like 20 minutes, because they came in and they literally said, what do we need to do? I said, this, this, and this. They kept coming back. I didn't have to tell one kid, knock it off, put this around. They were amazing. So, we are going to meet again on Wednesday to talk about how we can make it better. I thought it was great, but they want to talk about how to make it better. So, I just want to applaud Mrs. Smokeoff and her class. The seniors did an amazing job, and I'm really impressed. Plus, they were my very first kindergarten class when I was principal, so it's kind of special. I'm going to go. I'm going to go.
Thank you, Amy.
Just a quick update from the Western Great Plains Ball Conference Awards came out for football and volleyball. For football, Rush O'Neal, Jason Tharland, and Maddie Strissi, and Blair Lattimer were on the team, or Blair was on the gym for volleyball. Our first team, Reagan and Payson O'Neal, second team, Olivia McMillan and Kelly Paris, third team was Mrs. Hossen, and the MVP of the conference was Reagan O'Neal. So, some good highlights for our fall teams, finishing the season thoroughly, and that's that. Open gym update, everything's going really well with open gym. The last open gym, I believe last week, I was a little hectic with all the volleyball meetings and everything going on, and we didn't have a chance to host an open gym, and our coach couldn't get in there, and there wasn't one last night. But the last open gym, we had Jesse Barley hosted, and there was 25 kids there, which is almost too many for one coach to have in the gym at the same time, but the normal turns turn out for open gym. High school volleyball heads to the state tournament on Wednesday morning. Ms. Larson said there's a probably 3:40 tomorrow afternoon, community's invited, so please make sure that anyone knows about that, and they'll send off before the week on Wednesday morning at 7:00 a.m. Wednesday, the girls will get to Rapid, and they have an hour to practice on the court they're going to play on, and then I believe they'll have some downtime to eat lunch, do, you know, rest or do whatever they'd like. And then the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, it's a banquet for all the girls, and the coaches and their managers are qualified for the state tournament. It's about a ton of banquet on Wednesday evening at 6:30, and then they clip our sin at 11:30 on Thursday. I did post on the website last night, kind of a link to the rundown of seating and stuff. We're in the middle court, and it looks like we have two sections on the south side and two sections on the north side of the gym. So, just look at that, so I'll be sitting together. The kids can update the themes, it's red, white, and blue on Thursday, Friday is Buck Out, and Saturday is Purple Bowl. And then my last thing is our presentation from our head girls basketball coach, Shawna Evans. She got to go present at the Stanford Sports Academy in California. They asked every coach of the state championship team, regardless of any of our classes, to come speak at that, so that was a good opportunity for her. Said she learned a lot, so.
Yeah, so I kind of got through, I didn't really get a lot of instruction with it, so I just, I thought it was like a presentation, like I was going to present, just, did a whole slideshow, and got. Just made a whole slideshow and got everything ready, and then I showed up at Stanford at about twenty minutes till a presentation, and he's like, well, I've got twelve boys for you. And I'm like, oh, I don't need them. I've got my presentation. I'm just speaking about mindset, and he's like, oh, we moved gyms, you don't have a screen. So I had twenty minutes, and so I actually ran a full practice of Brandon Valley boys. But it was, it turned out really good. We shared a lot of drills. I got a lot of good feedback. So I don't know if you guys like want to see my presentation or if you just want me to talk about what it was about. I don't know, it's up to you guys. I don't care. So my thing was, what I was going to speak about in the presentation is like, if we replayed the state tournament, every night was a different winner. So it wasn't that I was the best coach there or anything like that, it was just that competitive, and it just happened to work out where all of our applesauce. But the biggest thing was like mindset, and when we went in there, making sure our girls were mentally tough and mentally prepared for like environments, and just really like the whole atmosphere, like getting ahead of yourself, but also not downplaying who we are and where we've come from. A lot of the things that I contribute to are from my coaches, because I was coached by like phenomenal, phenomenal people, Matt Reema, Jeff Kulikowski, Chad Thompson, and all of them taught me way more about life than basketball. So that's something that I really preach into our girls is everything we do is bigger than the court, because essentially, yes, I want us to be champions, I want us to be winners, but I want you to be good people. So a good talk that I had with Jeff Kulikowski, I was sixteen years old, like running with the rough crowd. So he had to kind of have that hard talk with me, and I tell the girls all the time, it's not going to be someone from far away that's going to hold you down, it's going to be your own people. So the crab in the bucket story. So that's how Jeff explained it to me, like you're going to have people that are pushing you and you're climbing up the ladder, but you're going to have a few that hang on your feet. So just being able to have the mindset, like, am I going to make it? Can I get out of here? Do I really care what this group says? Being able to cut off people that aren't supporting you are all these things and being that. Warrior mindset or champion mindset, it's like surrounding your people, surrounding yourself with people that bring out the best in you. And that's something we preach in towards all the time. We have a model, last year it was we over me, and that was a big mindset shift, and the girls bought into it. And then, and then I just like think back at the state tournament, it was crazy, like when I walked into the Warrior Gym, and I called it to my parents, it was a parent meeting, and we're kind of all scattered all over, and I think back to the state tournament, they were like, save me seven seats, hurry, 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 come on, come on. You know, we were all switched together because we were all promoting this positive things for our community. So those are things that really like drive my why, and that's why I do what I do, is I love my community, I love my kids, and just promoting positive things within our community is really like the big push in coaching and being able to do that by finding things they enjoy and pushing them to be their best. That was, a lot of my mindset is like our quotes that we go off of, and we talk about them each week, us and quotes to kind of get their mindset into what we're trying to build here, and just really push discipline, self-accountability, and pride. Teamwork is a big thing and competitiveness, we really push that as well. Listening to the other coaches, you know, it's a tough day and age to coach, so it's not here, it's everywhere, you know. So I, it's just awesome to hear from other coaches, and it was really rewarding to go and collaborate with them to kind of see how these programs that get to that level do have the same core values. And that was pretty awesome to see. And this group of girls and this, you know, what we're building here all the way down, I just got them helping with little warriors and the same thing, you know, they blow the whistle, they all stop. You know, we're still working on fundamentals there, but just that pride, bringing that back to our students and our community is really important to me. And that's essentially what my full PowerPoint was about, but I did practice instead, so it was a lot more fun. Thank you, guys, and go Warriors.
The board, any questions?
No. All right.
I would like to welcome Deputy Evans for our administrative committee reports.
Board, well. Hello. For everyone that doesn't know me, I'm Deputy Sweet Evans. I guess I don't know much about me, but this is the first time for me here. Just to recap a little bit from my last update, everything's still going good up at the school. I think it's a very positive thing having me out there. A lot of feedback, a lot of, a lot of good things, I haven't heard anything bad yet. On my last update that I had sent in, I had talked about the details for the, mining it up there for the school resource officer. The guy that was originally going to do them had a heart attack and kind of set things back. We're going to have that done for Red Ribbon Week. But he's back to work now, and I think we're going to get those done a lot sooner than we anticipated. Originally, they had, he was the cap or the acting chief, but I had all the vinyls donated from OSP Highway C. So it was no cost to anybody, they donated that, not only for the details, but for my door up at the school. I don't have any cool placards like the teachers have, so I thought I'd have the middle school decorate my whole door with stuff. So we've got those two things going. Every day, a student, who won, who won, what are the details coming? They didn't quite understand the situation, but they're coming, don't worry, they're Another thing I did just recently, I met with the freshmen and sophomores during their seminar classes, and I talked to them about doing, or if they would want me to come in and do presentations on stuff they'd want to learn, instead of just me coming in and teaching something that they didn't really care about or would affect them at all. So I had each student write a couple things on a Post-it note or a little note card, and there were some pretty wild ones out of left field, but there are still a lot of good ones. If we see a wreck, what do we do, stuff like that, just real life stuff that they don't quite understand yet or know about, stuff to carry in your car during winter time. So a lot, there's a lot of good feedback with that. And still, still positive reinforcement in the school, building more and more relationships with the students. I was surprised, surprised that it's happened this fast. I thought they'd be a little on edge about an officer being in the school. But I think overall, it's a good thing and looking to bigger, better things. So I'm still trying to get things learned, but it'll take a while, but we'll get it figured out. And that's all I got.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you like your job?
I love it. All the years I've been law enforcement for fifteen years, and it was all in reservation, and I, one of my sticks with working on Midnight was that I never had to go to school. I did not ever want to deal with school, I wanted to deal with kids. And then coming here has changed my perspective as being not only law enforcement, first responder, this is my community too. I was here for a while, and being up at the school has showed me a different purpose of serving. So I really do enjoy it, and I hope I get back more.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, we appreciate it.
Okay, board?
Yes.
Thank you much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Item number sixty-eight point zero, I need a motion to void the following check for lack of presentation. Check number one-eight-four-seven-eight-four, Country Inn and Suites for seven-one dollars. Motion by Dallas, do I have a second? Second by Ryan. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number sixty-nine point zero, motion to approve the supplemental budget for the following grants. Title one, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. RLIS, five thousand eight hundred and twelve. J, six thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. So motion by Dallas, do I have a second? Second by Ryan. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number seventy, motion to transfer one million two hundred thousand from Impact Eight to Capital Outlay. Motion by Caleb, excuse me, second. Second by Abby. Board discussion. And that was because of the bus.
The bus, the roof, there's the turf.
The turf. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Motion to approve the seventy, item number seventy-one, motion to approve the following contract for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Jo-1 Assistant Girls Basketball, two thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents. Neil Hicks Middle School Bass, Boys Basketball, one thousand five hundred and two dollars. Motion by Dallas, do I have a second? Second by Caleb. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number seventy-two, motion to approve the following surplus. Eighteen Chromebooks, VCHSO, one computer, VCHSO, one iPad, VCHSO, two IMAX, VCHSO, a two thousand one Chevrolet Bluebird, twenty-two passenger bus, a two thousand four Chevrolet Suburban, and a two thousand five Chevrolet Suburban. Motion by Ryan, do I have a second? Second by Caleb. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number seventy-four, motion to accept the resignation of Cole O'Brien. VCHS Boys Basketball, assistant coach effective immediately. Motion by Ryan, do I have a second? Second by Caleb. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motion, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Item number seventy-five, for some reason, we've got a delegate that's not going to go to peer. So we got to go through this motion, so. And I understand why.
I wrapped my brain on hog because we both.
It just doesn't fit, does it? Okay, so I guess we need to select a new delegate for the delegate assembly.
I'm making motion, aye?
What? Friday. We got a motion by Dallas. Second by Caleb to appoint Ryan as our Associate School Board Delegate Assembly. Board discussion. And did you bring in the, okay, we got to pack it up here for you. And where's it at?
Here.
Is it at Grand Coda?
Yeah, I think it's inside there.
Do that there, the time. It usually lasts about three hours. And you will contact Associate School Board and get the name change.
Yep.
So that might be registered.
So he's not Abby when he registers.
Not Abby.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. I need a motion to enter into executive session for personnel matters pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two and negotiations pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two four. Motion by Caleb, a second? Second by Dallas. Board discussion. Hearing that, all fair the motions, signify by saying aye?